Good evening and welcome to the December 9th, 2014 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Station, Channels 5, 19, and 20, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Falensky, do you have some announcements for us?
I do. The next school committee meeting is January 13th, and committee meetings are January 13th and 27th, February 10th, March 10th, April 14th, and April 28th, May 12th, and June 9th, 2015. And the committee does need to set the time for the next meeting.
Are we going to add another meeting to June? January?
June or January?
The end of June?
Oh.
For our school committee meetings?
I thought the committee discussed it and then said no.
Oh, I thought we had agreed it was good to do this.
I do too. I thought it was a no, but there would be additional...
Right. If you needed to schedule it, you could just schedule it. That's how I understand the meeting.
Yeah, we had talked about the date of the 23rd, the possibility of adding that for the superintendent evaluation.
Evaluation. Because the budget and the superintendent evaluation is a lot all at once.
I don't have in my notes whether we actually took a vote. I'd have to check, but I know that we talked about adding the 23rd. That's what I have in mind.
To ease that stress.
That's how I understood it. You can do it if it was needed. If you want to schedule it, I can certainly add it.
I'd like to recommend that we schedule it.
Okay.
Do we need a vote?
Do we need a vote on it?
You don't want to wait and see if you need it?
Well, I just, based on past experience, I just feel like it would be really helpful. Sometimes it gets tricky if we wait till it gets close, I think, for availability.
I think the evaluation process was what was challenging to do with one meeting, but...
Oh, I'd like to recommend it.
What day?
23rd of June.
So, a motion to add an additional meeting to the school committee calendar on June 23rd, 2015.
Second? All those in favor? Thank you.
And the time for the next meeting?
How'd it go getting here, Lori? You were here ahead of me.
I'm hungry, but you were...
We agreed it would be 6:30 unless we had a work session ahead of time, in which case we would move it back to 7:00 and have the work session at 6:00. So, otherwise, the meetings would be at 6:30. Does that sound right to everybody? Is that agreeable? Everyone agree? Okay, so the next meeting, if there's no budget work session, no work session, we'd be at 6:30.
Okay.
Okay.
Continuing on. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council will meet on the following dates in the conference room on the second floor at 50 Payson Avenue: December 10th, January 14th, February 11th, March 11th, April 8th, May 13th, and June 10th. There is no school, and just a reminder, that's tomorrow night. There's a packed meeting here, so please attend if you're able to. There's no school Wednesday through Friday, December 24th through January 2nd, due to Christmas, New Year's, and winter break. School will reopen on Monday, January 5th, 2015. There is no school on Monday, January 19th, due to Martin Luther King Birthday. There is no school on Monday, January 26th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day and semester change. There is no school February 16th through 20th, due to Washington's Birthday and winter break.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Peter? When do we, I know most of the dates that we're making these announcements about, we settled on last year. Can you remind me, I don't recall when we make that decision about setting the calendar.
After January, usually, was it January that we bring up to them? January, February?
Right. That's what I thought, and so I don't know if this is, maybe too late. But I remember in the past, and today, I think, we had to make, you had to make a call this morning about whether to delay or not open, and I know different schools in the valley made different decisions. But I'm reminded again about how warm it gets in June, and exploring options to ensure that we don't push our calendar there. I know in the past, we had talked about a couple other possibilities in surveying some of the areas that deal with bad weather, and I was just curious if, before we get the calendar that's sort of set for next year, at which point it's really too late, to start talking about those. We have a meeting right on the 13th of January, right? And then the 27th, or the 10th would be the one where we would get the calendar? And so, I don't know if that idea has any appeal, and it may still be too little amount of time, but I am, I'm just curious about possible ways that we can combat the June push. And as I was talking with people this morning and looking at the names scrolling through the school districts, I thought of how difficult it is for a superintendent at 4:30 in the morning, making a decision, not knowing. And if we built a schedule that allowed some flexibility, where you weren't so worried about June, I think it might, it might be beneficial. And again, I didn't do the follow-up research, but I know that I had conversations with students from districts that went to a four-day week in the winter, and whenever they had a snow day, opened, you know, in that week, the extra day, so that they didn't push themselves out. And another school district that had the so-called blizzard bags, where the students could electronically check in on a day when there wasn't school, and that it was a possibility that it would still count as a qualified day. I don't, you know, I think we were pretty pessimistic about whether that would work numerically here, but it might work educationally to explore it.
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe we should try to do a work session for the 13th meeting? Do the 6:30 work session, and then a 7 o'clock meeting that we could discuss things?
Talk about the calendar?
The calendar?
And all those options?
Yeah, I just didn't know whether, in the conversations, how far that had gotten, and whether there was any evidence that any of those ideas. Because again, I don't want to be in your shoes at 5 o'clock this morning, guessing when, when does the ice go to rain? Does it go to snow? Does it back up and we get everybody into school, and then have a difficult time getting them all home? Or do we call school off, and lo and behold, it's 40 degrees and clear by noon, and we're regretting the decision? I think if we had some flexibility, given the current environment that we operate in, it would be valuable to at least explore ways that we could do that.
It's one of the joys of being a superintendent, however.
Good call today.
I'm glad it was you and not me, because I would've made the wrong call, I'm sure.
Yes, I think we can certainly explore them. You know, there are state laws, rules, and regulations that dictate what we can and can't do in terms of attendance or students, and there's also contractual language about the start date. But I think that a work session where, you know, we share all of that information, and then, you know, put our heads together to think about other ways of looking at the calendar, certainly would be beneficial.
We found, even if, Peter is saying if it's not going to help us with school days, if it's even just kind of an educational bonus, it might be something that's more attractive to, you know, when you're discussing charter and choice, and how we compete with neighboring districts too. Why not be a pioneer?
Certainly worth looking into.
And we may just agree that we're doing the best we can, but we can at least then say to the, to the kids in June, you know, we tried, and Mother Nature dealt us the hand that she dealt us, and this is the reality that we, we have to work around, and then hope, hope for the best.
Is it primarily the elementary schools that we have those issues? Is that an issue at Whitebrook as well, or is it just primarily...
It's an issue at Whitebrook, and the elementary schools, clearly not at the high school any longer, which is wonderful. We do have five days built into our calendar for snow days, but unfortunately, the past winters have made us have to use those up, so. I mean, certainly worth having a discussion about, getting everyone's ideas on that, before we put out a draft calendar, which does go to the union, before, you know, we finally approve it.
You know, it might be helpful, Nancy, if you, if you talk a little bit about how you do make the decision, you know, for delays and to cancel, for the public.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Peter's right, it's about 4 o'clock in the morning when I set my alarm for 4 o'clock, and I look at the weather, check the weather stations, and then about 4:30, it was 4:30 this morning, my maintenance director, Pete Roy, is at our buildings, looking at the parking lots, and he's also driven in from Holyoke, so he has an idea about what the roads are like. He consults with the DPW about the roads in town, and he and I talk, and he gives me his assessment of what the roads are, and like, this morning, it appeared that it was going to be icy early, temperature was going to rise, and it was going to warm up and melt, you know, about, if we gave a two-hour delay. And, you know, you're always guessing, but that the roads would be decent by then. I also consult with neighboring districts, superintendents in neighboring districts. We start calling each other around 5 o'clock in the morning, and we kind of talk back and forth about what the conditions are in their districts, and what they're going to do. North Hampton, with Joy Winnie in charge of transportation there, and Superintendent Provost is one of my main districts that I consult with, because they're very similar in demographics to us, geography and so forth, so. And then at 5:30, I make the decision, because I have to let the bus company know by 5:30. And Peter, as you acknowledge, sometimes that's difficult, that you have to make a decision that early, because many things can change between 5:30 and when school starts, but you do the best you can, and you always err on the side of caution and safety of our students and our families. And that's usually how it goes.
It worked well for you today. Good call today.
It did. It did, and we were fortunate on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving that we didn't happen to have school. I'm hoping that we are having a lucky streak this year.
So, shall we change our plan for the next meeting and have a work session at 6:00? Have the regular meeting at 7:00?
At 6:00, a work session?
6:00 to 7:00?
It's the new lifestyle.
We'll order pizza.
In 2015.
I'm just thinking, I was thinking 30 minutes wouldn't be long enough to cover everything and have a full discussion on the matter.
Well, the conversation can begin at 6:00, and if there are one or two people who can't make it until 6:30, I think that's understandable. At least, you know, it'll take two minutes to catch them up if they come in at 6:30, but we've already been able to kind of hash things out.
Okay, so budget, I mean, excuse me. Work session at 6:00 to talk about the calendar?
This is January 13th.
Regular meeting at 7:00? And that's for January 14?
13.
14? No, no, I'm sorry, 13.
13.
Thank you.
Is there some research done on this topic? I know it's come up a couple times.
Mine's anecdotal, and I have not pursued it farther than that until days like today come along, and I'm reminded, and it's on my to-do list to follow up. I mean, my understanding is that, and these are districts in northern New England, that they've experimented with it, that sort of post-Thanksgiving, they, you know, they put in to effect plans to try to accommodate as much of the weather and the reality of their state laws. And I don't know how much of what they've, how much they've done, how much it would transfer over, and, you know, the idea in theory is attractive. I realize that there's all those obstacles. But the idea that you could tell students and families with relative certainty, "We're going to start school on this date, you know, at the end of summer, and we're going to end school on this date in spring," would be, you know, enormously helpful.
I did do some research on the idea of online learning, or the blizzard bags. I don't remember the specifics of it now, but I think my impression was that it does not fit with the state regulations, but, you know, I would need to look at it again.
I would think just even educationally, especially at the higher levels, like grades five and up, at least there's not that constant interruption in learning. There's something to be done on those days where it's, you know...
So, we'll get as much information as we can, and have that available at the work session.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to correspondence.
We have no correspondence this evening.
Okay. How about gifts?
We have no gifts to report this evening.
Oh, come on, it's the season of giving.
Oh, wow. Oh, that was last week. Looking at last week.
Okay, so in the realm of gifts, I do this every year, and somebody has to tell me, because I've left the flyer at home, I meant to bring it. We can still, as a school committee, participate in the raffle in town at the Chamber. I've done this in the past. Challenged my colleagues to contribute. We buy a ticket. If we win, we contribute the funds to the general support of schooling in East Hampton. If I promise to go tomorrow and buy a ticket on behalf of the school committee, that way we have a gift to report. Right? It's just a chance, but we could add $5,000 to the bottom line of the district, so. Any of you who think that's a neat idea, see me on the way out the door and all. See how much.
That's a dose, isn't it?
You know? Maybe we'll get lucky one of these years.
And on the subject of gifts, I believe Andy's working on compiling for us a year-end review of totals for all of the groups, organizations, businesses that have donated for us?
Yeah.
Because we'd like to acknowledge them in another way annually as well.
Sorry, Deb, I know I'm slowing you down, but I do want to point out for the parents or other people in the community who are concerned about the school committee gambling, that lotteries actually have a social purpose in the past, that this is how lotteries in part were used, is that when there was an asset in a community that no one person could purchase, but a family needed to sell, that one of the ways is that people in the community would buy a share in the opportunity to win the right to take on that property. And collectively, by everyone making a small contribution, the family that was selling would be made whole, and someone else in the community would get it. So, there is a social purpose to this.
There's also the Shirley Jackson novel.
Yeah, well, okay.
Thank you for educating us.
Sorry. I'll stop now, I promise.
Makes a lot of sense. Okay. Public speak is next on the agenda, and it looks as though we don't have anyone here who's anxious to speak with us, so we will move on to the finance subcommittee report.
Finance subcommittee just met, just to go over the minimum wage increase and the out-of-district special education tuition update. As we just met, there's no minutes, but you'll have them at the next meeting.
Very good. And the policy subcommittee, do you have a report?
Nothing to report. I do believe, are we meeting after, okay, we are meeting after this meeting.
Okay, very good. How about CES?
We have not met since the last school committee meeting. The next meeting is January 28th. It's in every other month.
Do you want to address this, or no? Do we need to address this?
That was in last week's, last meeting.
Cool. Okay. That brings us to Brian Atwater for our student activities update.
A few things tonight. The Students Against Destructive Decisions Club will be presenting their, where was it? The workshop. It takes a team, youth makes the mission possible. They'll be presenting it this February in Washington, DC. Also, the Concert for a Cause that occurred this fall has strong support from the community to happen again, and will likely happen again in September, October. The Model United Nations Team was currently in a lull, but they have found new advisors, teaching assistants from both the history and English departments. They're still looking for teachers to volunteer and become long-term advisors, because a teaching assistant is only a yearly thing. And they're also competing in the UMass Conference this March, the 13th to the 15th. And winter sports teams are organized and underway, being basketball and hockey, and practices are occurring regularly, and I believe that the game schedule is online on the school website. So, that's all we have to report.
Excellent.
What's the stance of the swimming program?
Oh, swimming as well.
Cool. I was trying to figure out who all those folks were masquerading in East Hampton gear walking by me. Heading to the pool tonight. Yeah, cool.
Just pre-accessible.
They're great. They're, it's so nice. They're all polite and wonderful, and they, they seem like they're working really hard.
As are all our students. Polite and wonderful. Working hard, huh?
Very much so.
Okay, moving on then to the superintendent's report.
Okay. I was asked to give an update on the Green Communities Grant, and the work is in progress right now. They have done the steam trap work in the elementary schools, and put in the aerators in the faucets, and they're going to be moving into Whitebrook next. Oh, they've also done the building envelopes for the elementary schools, which is, you know, the windows, doors, sealing up the areas. So, the progress is going along very smoothly and very well, and as I say, Whitebrook is the next building on the agenda. And that's sort of all I have about that. Any questions on that, that maybe I can answer?
Do you know, I know that two meetings ago, with the municipal energy committee, I'm lacking words, sorry, blah, blah. Marin, who chairs that committee, had pointed out that Whitebrook had seen a pretty significant spike, and he was going to be asking for a meeting. Do you know if that meeting happened yet? I could check with Marin offline as well.
What he wanted to do is, he wanted to check some of the, the energy consumption with, I think Pete. I think he was going to contact Pete.
To my knowledge, that hasn't happened yet, but I can check on it with Pete.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? The next item on the agenda is an update on the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The mayor had a call from Diane Sullivan, and she invited me down while she was having this call with Diane Sullivan from the MSBA, and Mayor Kadjar, I'm going to ask you to kind of give a summary of our experience.
I'm very comfortable with you, given the summary. Go ahead, you're on the roll. I can tell you it was very, you know, we discussed it a little bit last night, but it was very, very exciting to get the call, and, and we do have a meeting scheduled to go before the board in March, and I, again, the SOIs, Nancy receives very many compliments on how well those were put together, how easy they were to follow, how detailed, and we're waiting to see if we need to redo them, because it would be a year since, so, we haven't received that information.
No, it's after January.
So, our question would be, actually, I think the most exciting part is, we were among the 10% of the communities that received the good call. After our call was, Diane's job was very unfortunate that she had to call the other 90%. So...
We've gotten that call too, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it's very, very positive. We're feeling really, really elated about it, and the one question we wanted to know is what would we need to put together for documents for the next meeting, and it was even better to hear absolutely nothing. And so, you can take it from there, Nancy.
Yeah, so it was a very exciting call. Diane Sullivan has been great about working with us from the time that she and the two other members of the MSBA came to look at our buildings. And during that visit, I think I mentioned to the school committee earlier, I had asked if they would ever consider doing a K to 8 building, and she said it's really up to the community. So, we asked that question again, once we talked to her last week, to see if she was still saying to us that that could be something that we could consider. And she said in her first phone call that she would go to Jack McCarthy, who's the heads up the building authority, and just ask him, and the criteria were, you know, are we taking a new useful building off the grid, which we're not? And, and I can't remember, there were two other questions, but we passed with flying colors about Whitebrook. So, oh, do we have room to do this, AKA to 8, and we have the...
Land use?
Right. We have the Whitebrook property, and as well as another piece of property. So, and then she went on to say to us that we would have to do a schematic, and that we would probably, we would probably do a number of schematics, I guess. I'm not sure exactly how that happens, but she said then they might say to us, "Well, you know, we could, this is what we could give you," and so then we might think about, it could be just one elementary school, it could be an elementary school for all the elementary schools, it could be a K to 8. But, you know, we felt that there were some really good reasons to put forth this K to 8 idea. You know, there are different feelings about K to 8 buildings, but Diane Sullivan said she would put us in touch with other districts where they have K to 8 buildings and new K to 8 buildings. You know, clearly, Whitebrook is a old building that was built with the open classroom structure, which really is no longer a good structure for education for middle school students. We, as we said earlier, the building is a huge energy hog, and that's not going to change without a major renovation. Interestingly enough, we had an outreach advisory committee meeting last night, and one of our members is, teaches at the charter school, and mentioned that the charter school, which, you know, Karen and I have visited, is a K to 8 building, and that many of their families like that model, because it seems to keep our middle school students more, so that maybe they're not growing up as fast as they might otherwise. Age appropriate, so it's a good way of looking at it. So, we're very excited. March 23rd, I think, is the board meeting? So, and Karen was, as I say, gracious enough to invite me down to have her on speakerphone, because it was really, she had talked with me initially, I'd been there for the visit, and then it was, the next call was, as she explained, to the mayor of the community to see, to ask the question, is the community ready for this? And Karen announced in a resounding way that, yes, we were. And so, do you want to share any more about, is that good for now?
I think you've covered, I think you've covered just about everything. The other things that came out of their visit here was how we, I think they were very, very impressed with the way we utilize every inch of our grammar schools. Closets, you name it. They were very impressed how clean they were, and so, it was actually a very nice visit. It was really nice to hear their compliments. So, needless to say, we're more than positive about this meeting.
So, I guess the board meeting is our opportunity to present, you know, our readiness, and then after that, they'll make the decision, the board.
Is that, that's the next steps?
Can I make a suggestion? Because I think we all, I think we'll probably get a lot of support for K through 8. I think there will be some people who hesitate a little bit, you know, especially people of the younger spectrum of state 8 and having proximity. So, when we're talking, when it gets to the discussion of schematics, I think what might be easier and more palatable would be winged, a winged situation.
We have a lot of ideas.
Considering security, considering, you know, the higher the grade level, the higher the incidence of disturbances, and, you know, that sort of a thing. Just as added peace of mind.
Well, I think one of the things that will be tremendously helpful for us is to have a look at some other districts where there are K to 8 buildings, and see how they manage it.
And what works and what doesn't for them.
Right. And clearly, if we're thinking about that, you know, there'd be an opportunity that where we'll have a forum. As I say, Diane Sullivan felt that there would be administrators from K to 8 buildings who'd be willing to come and talk to the community about that, so, you know, I think we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but our first, our next step is to have that presentation at the board meeting and get their approval to go forward.
This is really exciting.
Do we have a rough, rough idea of timeline? Are we talking year and a half from now, or are we talking five years from now?
We have to not get ahead of ourselves. We have to go to the meeting.
I know, I'm just saying, what is the...
It's hard. It's very hard to...
Any way? Not at all.
Hard to tell, no, not really.
If you go on the MSBA website, they talk about all the various steps, once you're accepted into their program, all the various steps, and a sort of a timeline for it. I can't, I can't remember exactly how it goes, but you can look up that information.
And I believe there's actually, well, first of all, as you, as you all know, the school building, you know, school building committee, but also, I believe the, there's a requirement for the project manager, for even at the, at the design stage. So, there's a lot of, a lot of steps to it, but...
Probably depends a lot on construction too, or we, is there any demolition required, and where it can be put, and all of that'll play into it too.
A lot of factors that will play into it, but we're excited to...
We're heading in the right direction.
Yeah.
Well, just a little, I mean, if that helps at all, the vote for the feasibility study and the schematic design last time was 2005. So, if that kind of gives you a little idea of...
The vote?
The only thing is that...
So, that's the stage we're at now, that we're about to approach?
No.
For a schematic, that's the next step?
What we're doing right now is we're just going to the March meeting and take it from there, and trying not to get ahead of ourselves.
Oh, I thought schematics were next. I'm sorry.
They are, after the board meeting.
Oh, I see.
After the board meeting. We have to go to the board meeting and get the final approval before we can take next steps.
Okay. So, keep your fingers crossed.
Isn't 10% going to the board meeting? What percent of that 10% gets the final approval?
I don't know. They didn't tell us that. They, they wouldn't give us any more information than that, but, you know, I think we feel optimistic.
And they're very careful to, I mean, it was a very exciting conversation, but she And they're very careful to, I mean, it was a very exciting conversation, but she was also very cautious that this, we're scheduling a meeting and this is what we're doing here. This is the first step, so.
Very exciting.
Oldest in use elementary buildings coming up.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we're optimistic.
As I'm sure you'll bring up at the meeting. That's awesome.
Yeah. So we're excited and we'll let you know more after we know more.
And the date on that again is?
March 23rd.
March 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Karen and Nancy, for all your work and putting that, putting all this stuff forward and follow up. And Madam Mayor, will you just be sure to let all of us know the minute that we can start doing any community work? To just kind of spread the word and get support behind this?
Of course.
Because I think everybody here would be happy to circle the wagons, to start drumming up support and getting information out there, the right information out there.
That's great.
One last clarifying question. The decision on building type, K through eight or otherwise, that does fall on the community or is there a definitive answer there? Who makes that final decision?
Well, they would be making recommendations. What they said at this meeting is if everything, you know, goes accordingly, there's a lot of different options, they review them all and, you know, go over them all. And, you know, again, this is another review of the SOIs that they already have in front of them. And then there could be several recommendations.
The last time we went through the process with the high school, we had put forth originally a request for renovation of the high school, and we thought, and then we put forth a request for a new elementary school. And when they did their whole assessment, the feedback that we got back was that they would not, they would not fund renovating any of the elementary schools. It would have to be a new facility. And the same with the high school, that it would be new. They would not fund a renovation because of the structural issues and blah, 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 blah. So a lot of times, they've got a firm opinion on what should happen in terms of.
Right. And they have really good criteria to base it on, you know, base it on adding on to a school that has no room, you know, for like the grammar schools and playground areas. They take into consideration everything, so.
And we were fortunate enough to get them to see Whitebrook from the outside.
The drive-by.
Property, yeah. I really just did everything I could to encourage them to at least drive by and see the school and see the land. And so they clearly saw that we had property there. They said, oh, here's where you have your land. Because our elementary schools are all, you know, landlocked, housebound and so forth, so. So I was just delighted that they were willing to do that. And so I think that will work well for us.
When you mention the land piece, is it, is it known, the parcels that you think are most appealing for the potential of a construction of a K to eight building?
Well, I think they would probably ask us what land we do have available. So as you know, the Whitebrook area itself, but also if, it's funny, because there's land on the other side of the treehouse. So the city owns that large piece of property too. So you have the city land, then treehouse, then Whitebrook.
And I'm not familiar enough with the land and, again, I'm guilty of what the mayor's cautioning us against. I think if there's one thing that I wish was different about our high school, it's nothing about the building itself, but about its visibility, because I do think that there's something to curb appeal and when you have a magnificent facility. So as we're looking at land, the closer we can get it to a place where more people can appreciate the investment, even if it's just symbolic, I think it does a lot to build a sense of, probably every time I drive over to the high school, I'm reminded of how terrific it is, but I don't, you know, I don't pass by it as often as I wish I did or could. And I think, you know, Whitebrook you can kind of see, but it's dangerous to be looking that far down when you're going by that, going by that churn. So I don't know the lay of the land well enough to know whether anything like that is feasible. And I'm certain that other people will, you know, emphasize that priority too. But it would be great to have whatever next steps we take.
It's nice to show it off too.
Show it off.
Right, absolutely.
Lots of options available to us at this point and so it's pretty exciting. Okay, anything else on that?
Thank you for both of those updates.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on December school events, so that everybody knows either what's happened in December or what's coming. There will be a winter concert at the high school on December 11th at 7:00. And I really encourage you to, anyone in the community, to come and, to be there at that concert, because they just give a tremendous concert. Whitebrook also has a couple of concerts. They have a chorus concert, they had a chorus concert rather, on December 4th, which was very well attended. They have a grandparent holiday luncheon on December 11th, which is always just a wonderful event. I always get an invitation, which is lovely. And there's a band concert at Whitebrook on December 18th. So I just encourage anyone in the community to participate in those events when appropriate. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have some minutes to approve?
We do. Motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting regular session, November 18th, 2014.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion to approve the school payroll dated November 26th, 2014, in the amount of $450,041.95.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 26th, 2014, in the amount of $176,353.29.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's Peter's signature already. That is it, please? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.